Good morning and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council. I apologize for the delay. We've got some important business, so we're just trying to finish things up before we begin. My name is Barbara Johnson. I'm City Council President. And before we do our council meetings, we frequently have the opportunity to recognize important events that are going on or people in our community. And this morning, we're going to follow up on a resolution that we passed, I think, at the last council meeting, Councilmember Quincy, recognizing Gay Pride Month in the city of Minneapolis. And so I'm going to turn this over to my colleague, Councilmember John Quincy, and we've got a little fun to have here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'm John Quincy, Minneapolis City Councilmember for the 11th ward, and I'm delighted to be authoring this resolution, our annual declaration of June as 2017 Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month. So, but before I do that, I wondered if I could ask my colleagues to come down? I think they know where the order they're supposed to stand in. It should make sense when it happens. Of course, there's people that have gone. Okay, we've got to wait for Jacob to tie his tie. There better be somebody with a camera, otherwise...oh, good, Kelly's on the case.
Thank you so much.
All right. I'm going to present this resolution to you guys, Dot, Amy, and then I'll read the resolution and invite you to make some remarks, and we should be all good. Look at everybody's purpling out. He's going Prince. Okay. Whereas...yeah, it was Quincy's idea. Whereas Minneapolis was the first city of the state of Minnesota prohibit discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, a position subsequently adopted by numerous Minnesota cities and the state itself. And whereas Minneapolis was the first city in the state of Minnesota to adopt an ordinance creating a domestic partner registry. Whereas the city of Minneapolis has been steadfast in its commitment to the full legal equality of same-sex couples, and in particular, to end the exclusion of same-sex couples from marriage, as well as a public and vocal proponent of the Marriage Equality Statute passed in 2013 by the legislature and signed by the governor. Whereas the Minneapolis City Council, in partnership with the Minneapolis School District, our legislative delegation, numerous advocacy organizations, has long advocated for the 2014 passage of the Safe and Support of Minnesota Schools Act, providing a clear definition of bullying, listing 19 categories of students often singled out for bullying, and a creation of a school climate center and council to provide up-to-date anti-bullying research to school districts and focuses on bullying prevention. Whereas the city of Minneapolis's Transgender Issues Work Group was established in 2014 and has hosted the annual Minneapolis Trans Equity Summit since then, and to support and continue to raise awareness of the social, legal, health, employment, and other issues critical for the transgender community. Whereas in February of 2017, this council approved the creation of the Transgender Equity Council and was intended to serve as an advisory board to the city, Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board on Matters of Importance to the Transgender Community. Whereas Minneapolis has a thriving lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community sustaining and sustained by so many welcoming organizations, places of worship, businesses, neighborhoods, schools, events, and more. And whereas Minneapolis has benefited from the service and talents of numerous LGBT elected officials on the city council, the Park and Recreation Board, the Board of Estimate and Taxation, and in both the Minnesota House and Senate, as well as countless appointed officials, city employees. And whereas Minneapolis annually plays host to the Twin Cities LGBT Pride Celebration, the city's largest outdoor festival, in which Loring Park is transformed into a forum for celebrating LGBT pride and those, including allies, who work for it. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council in the city of Minneapolis, that June 2017 is hereby declared Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month in the city of Minneapolis, and that residents, visitors, are encouraged to participate in the numerous activities celebrating LGBT Pride Month in the city and in the ongoing work of leading Minnesota towards full LGBT equality. Be it further resolved that the 35W Bridge be lighted in red, orange, yellow...get it? We're all playing along. Green, blue, and purple on June 23rd and 24th of 2017. Congratulations. Thank you. And now I invite the Executive Director of TC Pride, Dot Bressler, if you'd like to make a few remarks.
Thanks so much, President Johnson, Councilmember Quincy, and the entire council for playing along today. Thank you. As mentioned, 2017 marks, actually, the 45th anniversary of Twin Cities Pride. Starting as a protest march in 1972, Twin Cities Pride has evolved into both the largest or both the premier LGBTQ event and the largest event in the city of Minneapolis. We totally appreciate the support of the city and look forward to this year's events. We applaud the creation of the Transgender Equity Council and look forward to working with the city on future endeavors, leading to full equality for the LGBT community in our city. Twin Cities Pride is leading the Equality March on June 11th in the city of St. Paul. Okay. And we invite all of you to participate in this important equality statement. Thank you for your support of Twin Cities Pride and the entire LGBTQ community.
I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting, Minneapolis City Council, to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmisano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Conno.
Here.
Reich is absent.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson is absent.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 11 members present.
We have a quorum present. Councilmember Reich is absent due to a family matter, and Councilmember Andrew Johnson is having surgery. So, we have the regular city council agenda in front of us. Are there any changes? I see Councilmember Glidden has a motion.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a motion to amend the agenda to include under the Order of Motion the Staff Direction Relating to Municipal Minimum Wage Ordinance.
Councilmember Glidden has moved to add to the agenda the item under number two...I'm sorry, to the council agenda under the...is it under...
It is.
Oh, under motions, under motions.
Yep.
Under motions, and it's in front of you. Call to order item number two. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. Councilmember Gordon, you have a motion?
I do. This is a motion to amend the agenda to include under the Order of Notice of Ordinances, introduction of a notice of intent from Gordon and Bender. Everybody should have it before you. It has to do with the regulations of tobacco.
Okay. Councilmember Gordon has moved to amend the agenda to include under the Notice of Ordinances, the...a notice of intent under ordinances. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries.
Those items then are amended to the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries.
The reports, the standing committees are next, and the first committee to report is the Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward 18 items for approval this morning. Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8 are all land sales. I'll note, all of them on the north side, and almost all for homeownership. Item number 9 is a bond reissuance. 10 is preserving affordable homeownership at the Wellington condominiums. 11 are the regular liquor business and gambling license applications. 12 is a business license settlement conditions. 13 is an application for youth at work competitive grant process. 14 is our labor reentry program grant partnership application. Item 15 is a project authorization analysis for a housing improvement district for the condos at Blaisdell, 2500 Blaisdell. Item 16 is a TOD grant application. Item 17 are Affordable Housing Trust Fund, RFP, and item 18 is the License Settlement Conference Recommendation for Certics. With that, I'll move all items 1 through 18 for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Goodman...uh, Glidden, excuse me.
Thank you. I have some comments on item number 17.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you. Item 17 is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Request for Proposals, and I wanted to make some remarks on one piece of that, which was directing staff to return to the committee in early June with a proposal to consider additional gap funding for projects that are currently caught in the pipeline as a result of the federal tax credit market issues. And so I wanted to say thank you to the committee for bringing that forward. I actually want to say a special thank you to Councilmember Frye, that I understand he was really raising this issue. We have a big problem going on, which is that we have a tremendous number of projects that are the types of projects that the city often gives some subsidy to, good affordable housing projects, but are stuck in this pipeline due to a number of issues, including the federal tax credit market, which was mentioned. And we are going to have to confront what is the best way to deal with this. Some of the projects that right now need some assistance in moving forward include Great River Landing and a project in my ward, which has been in the works for some time, which is an affordable housing project for Sabatheny Senior Center. So, I want to say thank you to the committee. This is an important issue to confront, and we need to consider what's the best use of public dollars and how they support these projects, and what's the right subsidy. I also wanted to just comment on some of the changes that were made to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Request for Proposals, because they are significant and important changes. One of the items is to extend the period of the loan term requiring affordability to 30 years. Previously, this was a 15-year commitment. So, again, you know, I've now been on the council almost 12 years. You see how quickly that period of 15 years passes, and if we are putting subsidy into public projects, we need to understand how we're getting a commitment that really matches the subsidy. There are other things in here that are new cost containment measures for these projects. Those are also really important and significant. So, thank you to the committee led by Councilmember Goodman, who's worked on these issues for a very long time, but all the committee members for working on both this proposal, which makes significant changes at an important time in our city's, you know, history, for re-looking at how we support affordability within the housing market of the city of Minneapolis.
Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Madam President. Council Vice President Glidden, I think, hit the nail on the head with respect to these affordable housing dollars. I want to thank Councilmember Goodman, as well as staff, for making some of these changes. I mean, we know that we're losing affordable housing right now, and a big part of that is when we give a subsidy out, it goes...comes along with the requirement that it remain affordable for a certain number of years, and usually that's 15 or 20. But in the...after that 15 or 20 is up, the properties can be flipped back to market rate, and we're on this revolving treadmill of losing affordable housing while we're just trying to keep up, and we are most definitely falling behind. You know, and simultaneously, in terms of the funding, we're losing these 4% and 9% low-income tax credits from the state, or at least that's the proposal that's out there. We're losing CDBG, Community Development Lot Grant Funding, from the federal government, and the city is going to have to step up. Now, traditionally, we've stepped up in the form of gap funding, and that was just...the city would come in at the last minute to sort of prepare the remaining funding just to get us to that final point, and I think what's happening right now is, in some cases, we're becoming more than a gap funder, and I think it's important to recognize what is happening, but I do think it's important the municipalities step up in this moment. So, appreciate the words, and I appreciate staff's work, and also appreciate staff's work on item number 18, which I...which I think is a good resolution. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye. On all items, no on item 18.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes on the report except for number 18, which has 10 ayes and one nay.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing three items forward. The first item is an amendment to our amplified sound equipment ordinances. We sent that forward without recommendation, and I'm going to be moving to refer that back to committee, because the improvements haven't been made yet that we were working on. Second item is accepting a grant funds from the Public Health Institute to assess community impact of climate change. And the third item is accepting $600,000 as part of the consent decree between Northern Metals, State of Minnesota, and the city of Minneapolis. And we're passing a resolution to appropriate the funds and requesting the state allocate the Northern Metal Civil Penalties to projects that serve residents of north and northeast Minneapolis, and also directing our Health Department to work with community members from north and northeast Minneapolis to plan for the use of the city of Minneapolis settlement funds. And I will move the second two items, and as I said earlier, I'm going to move to refer item one back to committee.
Councilmember Gordon has moved to refer item one in the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee back to committee, and approving items two and three. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, we have three items for approval. First item is a gift acceptance for travel-related costs from the Y through 12 National Security Complex. Second item is a contract amendment with SMG for Minneapolis PD to provide bicycle police in the neighborhoods adjacent to US Bank Stadium. And the third item is a contract amendment, which is a Getty USA LLC for workforce director software support, and I will move all three items for approval.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Anyone want to discuss any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report. That committee's vice chair is Councilmember Palmisano, and she'll be giving the report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's 20 items for approval today from Transportation and Public Works. The first is the Penn Oliver Concrete Street Rehab Program. The second is a memorandum of understanding with the Mississippi Watershed Management Organization. Three is about mattress collection and our recycling agreement. Four is a MinDOT partnership. Item number five works on our open select our open streets for the next couple of years. Item number six is a water purchase agreement with the city of Bloomington. Item number seven is a bridge project contract amendment. The next two items are about Northern Lights Express, a joint powers agreement and environmental assessment. There are three assessment adjustments for water service lines, the Nicollet Mall Reconstruction Project, and Fourth Street Southeast. There's a vacated alley sale to Minneapolis Public Schools. There's the 26th Street East and 28th Street Protected Bike Way variance request from MSA standards. There's 61st Street from Lyndale to Nicollet Street Reconstruction Layout Approval. There are then several, three bids for various parking ramps, communications, and storm sewer projects. Item number 19 was a commercial waste study, and item number 20 was honoring Public Works Week. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
You move all items. Councilmember Palmisano?
I move all.
Oh, thank you. Any discussion on any...Councilmember Palmisano has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report. Anybody want to speak on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. Ways and Means bring forward 12 items for your consideration this morning. The first item, I'm going to amend the committee's report and ask for a postponement of one cycle at council on item number one. Item number two is a legal settlement with Christopher Dager. Item number three is a contract amendment with Messenger Construction at the Minneapolis Convention Center. Item four is the gift acceptance and donations under $15,000 for April of 17. Item number five is acquisition of condemnation of two properties for eastside storage and maintenance facility. Item number six is the employee life and disability insurance and leave management administration, RFP. Item number seven is the contract amendment with Automon for practice manager software support maintenance. We also have a contract amendment with Sierra Cedar for PeopleSoft module implementation. Item number nine is the 2017 Housing Opportunities for Person with AIDS Request for Proposals. Number 10 is the 2017 and 18 nonrepresented employee's salary schedule. We also have the politically appointed salary schedule as item 11. Item number 12, and the final item, is the appointed position of the Human Resources Department for Director of Total Compensation. I'd like to move all 12 items for approval, except for the item number one, which is for postponement.
Councilmember Quincy has moved Ways and Means Report to postponing item one, moving all other items. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. We have four items from zoning and planning. Item number one is denying an appeal at 419 Washington Avenue North for a conditional use permit. Item number two is approving a rezoning at Minnehaha Crossing from C1 to C3S and retaining the pedestrian-oriented overlay district. Item number three is approving an application for a comprehensive plan amendment that would allow for development at Malcolm Yards. And item number four is an alley vacation for the project at 419 Washington Avenue North, and I will move items 1 through 4. Madam President, I would just make a brief comment on item number three.
Why don't you go ahead, please?
Thank you, Madam President. This item is the first step to allow for rezoning for development within the southeast Minneapolis Industrial Employment District. We had a very long discussion about this at the Planning Commission, so I just wanted to acknowledge that, and also say that any proposal for development here would have to come back through for the rezoning and all of the land use applications that would be related to a development. So, there was a lot of discussion about that at Planning Commission as well, and I know the council office has been communicating with the folks who might propose development here. That's the context here.
Councilmember Bender has moved the zoning and planning report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That report is adopted. And next, we have the Notice of Ordinance Introductions. The first is an item Councilmember Goodman gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the city council, the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to housing, to add provisions requiring advance notice of sale of multiple family rental dwellings. That notice is given. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just also want to note that I had asked Councilmember Glidden if she would be willing to co-author this with me, like we did with the Section 8 ordinance, and move forward. I'll also note, this is the first step of many requiring advanced notice for the sale of naturally occurring affordable housing projects to the city, but then also digging into the notice that would be given to tenants when that happens and what the regulations would be surrounding that. I have had an opportunity to talk to Councilmember Bender about it as well, so we're making this introduction today with the goal of trying to get this work, you know, done in the next six-month-ish range. So, just wanted to note that.
Councilmember Glidden, you want to be a co-author?
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right. Councilmember Conno?
Yes, Madam President. I have a question about this particular issue, but also wanted to...well, I'll wait until you call upon the municipal minimum wage ordinance. Councilmember Goodman, for this piece, is there a right-of-first refusal conversation that will be weaved into that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank Councilmember Goodman for bringing this forward. We had a very profile situation in my ward, but it's one of many where a property has changed hands and then rents have gone up significantly, and this is one piece of many solutions that we're all talking about and thinking about. We've also been working with the CD Chair and Council Vice President and others to plan for a study session in July, so we can get more of a public discussion going of all of the work that our staff and all the various council members are doing around this issue of rising rents and displacement in our city. So, this is one of the many steps, and again, very thankful to Councilmember Goodman for taking the lead on this as the chair of the committee that the work will go through.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to more fully respond to Councilmember Conno. The notice of intent is essentially to give preservation-minded buyers the opportunity to come in. So, it's not a requirement of a right-of-first refusal, it's a notice to the city so that The notice of intent is essentially to give preservation-minded buyers the opportunity to come in. So it's not a requirement of a right-of-first refusal. It's a notice to the city so that we can reach out to preservation-minded buyers, along with the funding that we have set aside, and encourage them to buy these properties. So it is essentially giving us an opportunity to intervene. That's one piece of it. The second piece is giving us an opportunity to intervene on behalf of tenants to make sure that they know what is going to happen when a building is sold. So it's not the traditional right-of-first refusal type of thing. It's a little bit more nuanced. It gives us notice to give us the opportunity to find a friendly buyer.
Any further discussion on the item? That notice is given. And next, we have a notice of intent by Councilmember Goodman, Councilmember Reich, to introduce at the next meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to liquor and beer, amending various provisions relating to temporary licenses for events. That notice is given. Next, we have Councilmember Frye giving notice of intent to introduce at the next meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to, again, license and business regulations, short-term rental service provider, adding a new chapter. That notice is given. We also have Councilmember Frye giving notice of intent to introduce at the next meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the zoning code relating to the provisions of short-term rentals. That notice is given. Next, we have, was amended on the agenda, Councilmember Gordon and Bender give notice of intent to introduce at the next meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to tobacco, amending regulations relating to the sale of tobacco. That notice is given. Under the introduction and referral calendar, we have the municipal wage ordinance, and that is a motion by Councilmember Glidden to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to administration workplace regulations for first reading and referral to the Committee of the Whole for a public hearing that will be held June 22nd of 2017 at 3:30 p.m., adding a new Article IV entitled Municipal Minimum Wage, and unanimous consent is required for that. Councilmember Glidden?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just wanted to note, and because we have the staff direction, that's sort of an accompanying piece coming at a later portion, we can, that's probably a better opportunity for conversation, but I just wanted to note, this is one where my belief is there are several council members who have done significant work already on minimum wage who will want to be co-authors, and because of our open meetings process, we're asking council members to contact the court to ensure their names are properly on as co-authors of the ordinance. I know several others have, several have already done so.
Thank you. That motion requires unanimous consent this morning. So any further discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Next, we have under resolutions, honorary resolution for Timothy Giles, who is retiring. We had a lovely ceremony for him and fun ceremony. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Under motions, we have the municipal minimum wage ordinance, and it's a motion at this time by Councilmember Glidden, Conno, Gordon, and Bender with the staff direction. So I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will go over what is in the motion, and if I might also have some latitude to maybe give a little bit of background, and then my guess is there will be discussion, perhaps several portions of this. So this is a motion that does a few different things. First, it sets a schedule of public meetings related to consideration of a municipal minimum wage ordinance. Second, it gives some direction to our staff, asking them to create a draft ordinance for us to then have discussion and consideration of in public meetings. And then finally, there were some additional staff recommendations that didn't clearly fall into whether they should be in an ordinance or not, and so those are listed separately, and it may be that they do fall within ordinance framework or not. I'm going to go back over these three sections. For setting the schedule of public meetings, just for councilmembers and the public to know, I went back and I looked at the framework that we utilized for the sick leave ordinance and tried to do something similar so that we had a good amount of time to consider language and give notice to the public and so forth. As with the sick leave ordinance, I will assume that this will be something that is highly covered in the media, which, you know, quite honestly helps in getting notice to the public, ensuring that people are following along with the details of what we're discussing in our public meetings. In the sick leave ordinance, we had about a month where we fully devoted that period of time to consideration of actual ordinance language, and so we will set a meeting on Tuesday, June 6th at 3:00 p.m., and all of these will be sent out in a release by the city so that it, the schedule is clear. That will be a meeting for the purpose of presenting a draft minimum wage ordinance. Next, we will also have a public hearing that will be scheduled for Thursday, June 22nd to begin at 3:30 p.m. and continue until all speakers have been satisfied. And then we have a final meeting scheduled to date, which would be Wednesday, June 28th for the purpose of reviewing the ordinance and likely making further adjustments and amendments to that ordinance language during that meeting to discuss the ordinance. Again, this follows pretty closely what we did for our sick leave ordinance. Next, we have some, I have drafted some direction to be given to our staff to help them in creating a minimum wage ordinance, which they will then present to us. And I'll say that some items are very clear and some items are not so clear, and I'll just note that we have not had a full opportunity for public discussion, the council members, and this is why there are some pieces that just, there is more flexibility, and my guess is there may be some further conversation about have I drafted this in the way that folks feel gives the right amount of flexibility in those areas. I'll read through the recommendations, and I will note that they very closely follow the recommendations that came from the staff report. And again, this is to give us a place to work from, and we will then be able to get further comments from council members on how they might want to adjust those elements. They are, A, consistent with state law, the ordinance shall apply to anyone who works in Minneapolis for any amount of time. B, setting a universal wage level of 15 to be indexed to inflation after the initial target wage is met. C, all workers are subject to minimum wage regardless of tips consistent with state policy. D, a training wage may be paid to youth up to the age of 20 years for no more than 90 days consistent with current state law. E, a tiered phase in period that reaches a maximum wage of 15 five years after the ordinance is adopted for large businesses and a longer period for small businesses. F, the Department of Civil Rights shall be responsible for enforcement of the minimum wage ordinance. So just a couple comments on this. One is that the staff report did not identify a specific wage level, so this staff direction does do that and identifies 15 as being the level within which we are asking staff to target the minimum wage. The other item I just want to call out is the tiered phase in period. Again, I feel like this is the one that just councilmembers will have the most input and desire to shape this more. As it's written right now, there is a lot of flexibility, but folks may say this is not enough flexibility. So we'll see what the reaction is right now. This does not identify how many tiers. This does not yet identify what is what we consider large versus small. All of those are very important, significant questions, and so we will be asking our staff to assist us. They have already done a significant amount of work to look at what has happened around the country, what are examples, and then using that in conjunction with the input that they've given and further consultation with council members to, again, then present something for us to discuss in a minimum wage ordinance that will be discussed at a public meeting on June 6th. Finally, there were these additional staff recommendations, which is the final part of the staff direction here, and they include, A, funding, a regular review of the minimum wage ordinance, including an annual evaluation of the impact on the local economy, and an examination of how the policy implementation specifically impacts tax receipts, wages, and the unemployment rates of Minneapolis workers. This is one where I'm not clear today whether this is something that we want some reference to in the ordinance or not, and we need further discussion with our staff. And then finally, identifying ways to support businesses and smaller businesses. In particular, we had a little bit of an update from Ms. Rivera Vandermeide at our Committee of the Whole meeting, and are anticipating a more fulsome report on that coming for the next one to two months, as I understand. So that's a bit of explanation on this, and looks like we have a whole lineup of council members ready to speak or ask questions. Councilmember, Council President Johnson?
So on your motion, Councilmember Glidden, we have a number of people who'd like to speak. Is there a second, first of all? Moved in, seconded. Councilmember Gordon wishes to speak.
Thank you very much, and I really appreciate all the thought and effort that went into the staff direction. I think you, or you, or we, or everyone who's worked on it has come up with something that is very close and very workable. I would like to make an amendment to it, that you should have this before you assume we're passing it out. So I would move to amend item 2E to delete the five years and replace it with four years so that it would read a tiered phase in period that reaches a maximum wage of $15 four years after the ordinance is adopted. I'll note to the clerk that what I passed out was based on some old language, and mine reads after ordinance adoption. I noticed the last staff direction says the ordinance is adopted, so we can stick with that language if we want. If I get a second, maybe I can speak to that.
Second.
All right. I think, I'll just speak to it briefly, and maybe others want to as well, but I think we first started talking about $15 as a minimum wage, must have been about four or five years ago, and I think the number 15 resonated with people because it seemed like that was a living wage. But what we learned yesterday is that actually right now, 1525 is a living wage for a single person. So then we, the longer we wait, the harder it's going to be for people to get closer to that living wage that we want to get. I also note, the staff report and the staff recommendation, they said that we should at least phase it in over four years, and I think we should start from that position and we should go for the four-year adoption. Even if we do that, in four years, when people are making $15 an hour, that won't be a living wage because the cost of living is going to keep going. I also have deep concerns that we aren't targeting it to when we catch the living wage. Then we could go on a cost of living. I think that should be our goal, but I understand that's a lot to ask for right now. My motion right now is just to say four years instead of five years, which is pretty modest. We can, of course, look at this ordinance again in the future and look at things again about living wages and how the economy can deal with it. So I'd appreciate the support of the amendment.
Councilmember Gordon has moved to amend the motion. Is there a second? Moved in, seconded. Any discussion? Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to speak in favor of Councilmember Gordon's motion to move it to four years, and I want to let my colleagues know that I have an additional amendment coming, which should be passed out in a heartbeat. And I'll just tell you what it is so that you can account for that in this vote as well, and I encourage you to vote yes on this and as well as yes on my next amendment. So it would say a tiered phase in period that reaches a maximum wage of $15, and then Councilmember Gordon's amendment, four years after the ordinance is adopted for large businesses and a longer period for smaller, adding an ER, businesses with consideration for up to three tiers for business size, accounting for the differences between small, somewhat medium, and large. Obviously, we have some, we have to work out the details on what exactly those sizes are, but I think it is important to count for all of them. So I'm speaking in favor of the motion, and I will be bringing an amendment in just a second.
Councilmember Gordon, did you wish to speak? Councilmember Gordon?
No, I just checked in when it looked like we were confused if he was amending my amendment. I don't think that's the strategy right now, so we can vote on this one and then go on his. Thank you.
Any discussion, then, further discussion on Councilmember Gordon's amendment? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Frye?
Aye.
Palmasano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Conno?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
I'm just going to abstain from voting.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 10 ayes and one extension.
That amendment is adopted. Then on Councilmember Frye's amendment? Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Madam President. I think I just explained it, so I'm adding two pieces. One, I'm adding an ER to the end of small, so it's smaller businesses, and then adding, following the comma, with consideration for up to three tiers of business size, which staff can consider. Clearly, we need to work out the details on what exactly that phase in is for the smaller businesses and specifically what the business sizes are, but I think it's important to allow that flexibility.
Any, is there a second on Councilmember Frye's motion? Moved in, seconded. Discussion? Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to note that, you know, I think what we're doing today is trying to get to a starting point to allow staff to bring us a proposal that then has all of these important details around the phasing, which is a complex issue. So what are the potential cutoff sizes of big and small businesses? Do we have two tiers or three tiers? What is the pace at which things are phased? What are the ultimate decisions that we make about the start date of phasing and as, you know, how fast the first employees get up to that $15 amount and how long it takes for the last employees to get there? So I just want to reassure everyone who's been involved in discussions with our staff and individual council members and part of our Workplace Advisory Committee that we aren't making any final decisions today. And I also just want to really emphasize that especially the business owners that have taken, and representatives of business that have taken their time to be at the table participating in our committee, we actually had quite a lot of trouble recruiting businesses to participate at the table. Those that have been there, you know, have communicated specific, but sometimes differing things, both through staff and to council members, and again, just want to emphasize how much we appreciate that time, especially the small businesses where owners are coming, you know, in the middle of the day where they're working their own shifts. And so if you don't see the specific thing that you've asked for here in today's motions, I think that's still, just as a starting point, we still have a long period of discussion here, including a public hearing, to get to these final details, and I think all of these specifics are really going to matter in terms of how is it affecting workers and businesses? So that's kind of a long way of saying, I think, again, today is a starting point. Thanks.
Any, well, Councilmember Gordon?
So I appreciate this amendment, and I'll support it. I think it just says we're going to consider up to three tiers, so I think that indicates we're not interested in four, five, six, or seven. So one, two, or three. And the way, it was wide open before, maybe there was an assumption there'd only be one tier, but I think this kind of puts us in a certain direction, and we know we have some micro businesses that are concerned. It could be that we end up with just the large and the small, like other cities do, but we might end up with more, and so I can support that. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Frye's amendment? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Then on the main motion, is there further discussion? Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to take a moment to reflect on the significance of today's sort of next phase of beginning, the final process of passing a $15 minimum wage in the city of Minneapolis. And when we started this a few years ago, it was workers who led the way, and so we are so thankful for all of the time and effort that folks who are working with our working community in Minneapolis have taken on this. I think sometimes we forget when we look out in the room that behind all of you are 70,000 low-wage workers who will benefit from a $15 minimum wage increase, including a woman that I met with the other day when she was in danger of being evicted from her apartment. You know, that brought her to City Hall for the first time, and she hasn't been able to come here to meet with council members about raising the wage, but this law, when we pass it, will have a direct impact on her ability to pay rent, to send her daughter to college, who will be starting at the University of Minnesota in the fall. You know, and she's right now looking for a second job to help pay for all of her bills as well as her daughter's future. And when I told her that we were getting ready to raise the wage to $15 an hour, it made her really happy. And that's who you are all here representing, again, tens and tens of thousands of workers standing behind you. Today, we are working to raise the floor for workplace standards in our city. Our economy has changed, and we talked about this a lot when we were talking about earned, safe, and sick time and fair scheduling. Tens of thousands of workers of Minneapolis are working multiple low-wage, part-time jobs and cannot make ends meet, and that's what today is about. That's why we're raising the minimum wage in Minneapolis, even with all of the risks we think we're taking. You know, we may risk a slight decline in job growth in our city. We are hearing from our business community that we're putting stress, especially on our small and local businesses, but the risk of allowing people to live in poverty in our city is too great not to act, and that's why I have been so supportive of us taking this step to raise the wage in the city. I also want to reflect on the ways that cities are leading. Our federal government is stuck, and now is coming after the citizens of cities. Our state legislature is shutting down. They can barely pass the bare minimum of laws to keep our state running, and we are stepping up and leading in the city of Minneapolis, and it's hard. Me and my colleagues have put in so much work, but all of you have put in more hours and time, again, the small businesses and the large businesses who've come and participated in this discussion, and the workers who've come to City Hall time and time again over years asking for us to act. That's why we're here today, and cities are leading because we have to, but it's an exciting moment for us. But it's an exciting moment for us to show our state government, our federal government, what it looks like when we stand together and work together to solve the problems facing the constituents that we represent. So I'll end there, because I know, I'm sure others want to speak more. But I'm also, just in closing, want to say, look, we started out as a body of elected leaders, not all on the same page with this discussion, and we are working together now to find a final ordinance that's going to work best for our city. And that is the important work of democracy. It's debate, it's listening to our constituents, it's compromising, but I'm really proud of the way that the Minneapolis City Council has been able to work together with each other and the mayor on this important issue, to bring this over the finish line, hopefully here in the next month.
Councilmember Kano?
Thank you, Madam President. I am thrilled to be here, standing with you on this issue today. I would like to add my name to this motion and this staff direction, and I wanted to take the opportunity to really acknowledge the powerful voice that you have all built across our city to ensure that this item moves forward and that we, as council members and elected representatives, have the honor and the privilege to represent you on this issue and to advance this economic justice agenda. And it's no secret that in Ward 9, the heart of the Raise the Wage movement was born, and I want to acknowledge the hard work of people like Ty Moore, Ginger, Veronica, many of the folks who are in the room today, who really lifted up the voices of working families across our city to ensure that we, as an elected body, were able to stand with you and for you on this issue for the last three to four years. So it's been wonderful to see all that energy. I acknowledge all the hard work and the sacrifice that many of you have put on the table and have pushed back against every single challenge that we have faced together, both on this dais, on the streets, in those companies, on those strike lines every day. So I'm really happy to be able to cast my vote today. This is an ordinance that I have been waiting to put my name on, and I can't wait to see what we do next. So thank you for being here.
Councilmember Glidden?
Thanks, Madam President. Well, my colleagues have been saying it very well, I just, I really believe that community leads the way on the best work that happens in the city, and this is what's been happening. We have elected officials that are following the lead of community, which has shown through gathering signatures on a petition, through opinion polls, through rallies, and all sorts of efforts over years and years and years, that this is something the public is demanding. But it's not just in Minneapolis. I mean, this is what's happening nationally, is that these efforts to find ways to raise the wage, whether it's at the city level or at the state level, are wildly popular. They are passing right and left. And again, that is just speaking to what has been happening to our economy that is so damaging to everyday people. Wage stagnation is real, and it has a real cost. I think kind of back to whenever was some of the first times that I had partnered with Saytool on some of their organizing efforts to learn more about the experiences of those workers and the stories they were telling, were not even about wage stagnation, it was about wages decreasing. So this is the reality that is happening in many industries, and it is a pressure that is finding its way to really harm working people. There's impacts to raising the wage. I just feel as well, I want to acknowledge that. There's impacts to workers if it doesn't happen, or it doesn't happen fast enough, and there are impacts to business if we are not careful in how we work and partner and make sure that we are listening to what are some of those impacts and that we are stepping carefully. So that's why I really appreciate the work that our staff has done to gather research, to gather comparisons, and use that in addition to what we're hearing from our business community. And I think that this really has been a time where we are finally kind of coalescing on how we're coming together as a council. And in the end, I think this is what the public expects. They expect us to both have reasoned and respectful debate, but in the end, to come up with a product and pass laws that benefit our economy and benefit the people in our city. And that's what I think we're marching towards. I want to thank again everyone who's helped us get to this space. I'll just remind us, we got a little ways to go, and it will probably, in some ways, be a little bit of a challenging space, but I feel like we're in a good zone, and we have some good basic agreement, and I think we will be refining that in the days to come.
Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Madam President. You know, this conversation started a couple of years ago. It's moved through several phases, from staff directions to studies to RFPs to a ballot initiative, and now I think we're moving forward to do this thoughtfully, reasonably, and functionally. And, you know, as is noted in the staff direction, we are going to be accounting for small and local businesses. We are going to be accounting for possibly even mid-sized businesses as well. You know, this is not, this is not an all or nothing approach. This is an ordinance that does require nuance, and I think we are going to be moving forward collectively to make sure it uplifts workers while simultaneously accounting for different sizes and styles of business.
Any further discussion on the motion? As amended. Seeing none, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. I forgot, sorry. Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you, everybody who is here today and for letting me speak in your meeting. I won't be voting today, of course, but I am grateful to be part of the conversation. I am grateful to all the folks who are here, all the folks who came to the listening sessions, everybody who has spoken up and out over time about what they believe, what they think, and what they prefer. And as the city moves forward on an increase in the minimum wage, there have been three main levers at issue. One is, what is the amount of the minimum wage increase? And there came to be some clear consensus around 15. One is whether or not tipped workers would be included, and there came to be some consensus about one fair wage. And the final lever, that is, you know, one of the big levers that we have, is how long is the runway to the buildup for until 15? And I think there's been discussion here today, as Councilmember Bender pointed out, that conversation is not over. I look forward to being part of that conversation as well, because how we structure it and over what period of time can make a big difference for the businesses in the city of Minneapolis, especially those who have been participating so avidly in our process at a time when many would not. And so I appreciate the consideration of those three levers, as well as some of the other things that are in this staff direction. I appreciate the city council for the work that you've done, particularly council members Glidden and Bender and Gordon and Kano, and I, who are named on this item, and look forward to next steps. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, oh, Councilmember Frye?
I'd just also like my name to be added.
Okay, Councilmember, clerk noted that. Any further discussion then on the motion? Seeing none, clerk, as amended, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Frye?
Aye.
Palmasano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That motion is adopted. To continue on, under new business, we have the 2017 State of the City Address, and it's a motion to receive and file the 2017 State of the City Address by Mayor Hodges. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have announcements, and I'm going to make the first announcement before a lot of people leave, actually. We're going to have a, we're going to have a bell concert today, our city bells, which are, we have 15 bells, and they are bells that can play music. They're going to play for one hour today, from 12 noon to 1 o'clock, to honor the 100th anniversary of the birth of President John F. Kennedy. And so it is going to be a patriotic concert as well as some popular music. So I'd encourage people, they can be heard, you know, all through the downtown. It's really very lovely, and our bells are a wonderful asset to our city hall. So please, in honor of our president's birth, his true birth date is May 29th, and he would have been 100 years old on 29th. Councilmember Quincy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to alert folks of another event this weekend. On behalf of Councilmember Reich, I wanted to invite people to participate in our National Gun Violence Awareness Day. We declared June 2nd to be that day last month, and we just wanted to note that, you know, as we know, gun violence kills more than 90 Americans a day and injures hundreds more, and that's why June 2nd is National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And we renewed our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledged to do all weekend to keep firearms out of the wrong hands. So that event, to celebrate that event, is on Saturday, June 3rd, begins at 1:00 PM, and so we invite folks to join Every Town for Gun Safety and Moms Demand Action, as well as other community partners for Gun Violence Prevention Awareness Day. That will be at Columbia Park up in northeast Minneapolis. Invite people to wear orange for that day. So I'm not going to orchestrate fashion anymore this week, except for wearing orange on June 3rd.
Any further announcements? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn is in order. Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Thank you all very much.